Go, Ray.
It's five thirty, but I'll wait until you tell me Sharon's ready and you're ready, Callie.
Callie's already ready. Are you always? I didn't touch it.
There he is. You're right on time.
We were waiting for you, Betty. Ray.
Should I go ahead and call the order? Calling to order the Parowan City Council meeting for December twelfth. It's five thirty P. M. Thank you all for coming out here tonight, and some of you traveling from a distance. We appreciate you being here. We will start with opening ceremonies from Councilmember Topham. She's going to give us the opening prayer and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful to come together as a council to discuss the city's business. We are so grateful for this beautiful town in which we live in, for the community, and for the spirit in which it is here. Please bless it as we go through all this meeting, that we can have the, with us to guide and direct us to make the best decisions on behalf of the city and of the citizens. Also, please bless all of those who are in need of a special blessing for healing sickness, or those that are serving in our military, that you will be with them and to protect them and comfort them. We are so very grateful for everything you have given us and to say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Stephen.
Amen.
Can you please stand?
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rochelle.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, do we have any conflicts or personal interests that a city council member would like to declare at this time?
No.
No, ma'am.
You might want to introduce that Sharon is on Zoom.
Oh, Councilmember Downey is on Zoom, so...
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yeah, loud and clear.
We've got you.
See if she can hear you.
You look a little different tonight. You look like an owl, an electronic robot owl.
Yeah, we only have one working, so it's looking...
Oh, so what's that mean?
But, no, we can hear you. Sharon, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So now open up the public comment time. This time is now yours. If you're here to make a public comment, we will allow you three minutes. Come to the microphone, state your name. You don't need to give your address, just that you're a resident, and the time is now yours. Being that there are no people here, I think, to give public comments, and nobody's moving, we will move on to our consent meeting. This, these are items that are generally administrative in nature and are approved with one motion.
Mayor, I ask for a division of the question. I move to vote on items eight and nine individually and five and six and seven together.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve five, six, and seven.
I second it.
You need a second.
I second it.
Oh, you're, that was your motion?
I moved, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, okay. So with that being said, five, six, and seven will be, I'll ask for a motion on those three first.
Mayor, I move to approve consent item meeting five, six, and seven.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving to item number eight as a separate item. It's approval of P. O. for Bartok Controls, Inc. in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty.
I'd just like some explanation on that. I just don't know what it is.
So, anything that's over twenty-five thousand dollars before the check is cut needs to be approved by the council. It's within budget. Jeremy's here. Is this you or is this one Aldo?
No, that's not me.
This one was Aldo.
So what exactly is it and where? I mean, twenty horsepower vertical turbine pump for twenty thousand dollars?
This was the first of two lift pumps that has to be installed out at the sewer lift station, out at the sewer lagoons. This is something that we planned on, budgeted for, and are implementing, just a replacement.
Were they a special pump then?
Yeah.
I mean, to be that price, I would hope.
Oh, yeah. No, this is, this is a workhorse pump that, when the, all of the, all of the wastewater gets into the main receiving unit, it then has to get pumped into the sewer lagoons. This thing fails and we have a problem. So it is, it is at, the current one is nearing, actually, it's been at almost end of life for a while now, and we've been planning on replacing it. We also have to get a different, another lift pump for when we pump water back out to discharge. So we, our plan was to replace both of those this year.
But this is just one, and you're just replacing the one?
This is one pump. Yep.
Okay. And it's in the budget?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the P. O. for Bartok Control, Inc. in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three fifty.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The reason I was talking about Jeremy is because Jeremy's making a big purchase too, but it's not ready, it's not at the point where we need to send the check out yet, so he's got one coming.
All right, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Sorry.
Um, moving now to the approval of the annual meeting schedule notice for twenty twenty-five.
I wanted to have a discussion on this, Mayor, because I, I agree with the dates, but I've had a lot of comments on the time. And I think that we should be consistent and have the meeting as we have it, had it traditionally at six o'clock. I've had a lot of people that are confused with the planning and zoning and other meetings that are held at six. And of course, this has always been at six. And I just want to make sure we are accommodating the public and allowing them to be able to attend when necessary.
All right, I mean, from this, from my perspective, we did bring this meeting change time to the council for a vote, and it was voted by, I think, four to one?
Three to two.
Okay, three to two. So are you suggesting we bring it back to the council for a vote again, or?
Yes, right now. We can address it right now.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to either maintain the meeting at five thirty or to change it back to six P. M.
I make a motion. I move that we change the meeting time of the council meetings to six o'clock as it was traditionally and leaving all the dates as outlined in the, the schedule.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay.
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 All right, so with a three to two, the meetings will remain at the five thirty P. M. time for twenty twenty-five.
You still need a motion to do that, though.
Okay, and so now a motion to approve these dates.
The dates?
And the time, because the original, the other motion was for six.
Just the meeting schedule.
The date, the meeting schedule.
Just the meeting schedule.
I propose that we approve the annual meeting schedules through two twenty, two thousand twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Right. So again, with a three to two vote, we will move forward with this meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five, for these dates at five thirty P. M. Thank you. All right, moving now from our consent meeting into recognitions. We wanted to take some time this evening to introduce our two new city employees, and they are both here, and it would be wonderful if they would come up to the microphone. I'll start with Connie Biassi. Or do you want to come up together?
Together.
Okay. He's like, I don't want to do this by myself. All right. So Connie Biassi is our new utility billing specialist. She is a Parowan native and is the daughter of Jim and Christine Robinson, and is the wi, is a wife and mother of four. She has a background in helping people. She previously worked in the medical field, working in the office and in billing. She and her husband are Parowan entrepreneurs and have built several successful family businesses. She is a hard worker, always has a smile on her face, and absolutely loves Parowan and its people. She is perfect for this job, and since she will be the primary person interacting with the public in billing and other matters... Oh, she is the perfect person for this job, because, there's one word missing. She is the primary person interacting with the public in billing and other matters in the front office. And Connie's just been a delight. It seems like nine out of ten people that come in already know Connie. She knows them, and sometimes they trace some memories, and it's neat to hear that interaction out in the front office. So thank you, Connie, for being here. And now I would be delighted to present Brooke Gleason. She is our new communications specialist. She and her husband chose Parowan to raise their young family four years ago. Together, they have four small boys. She is a part, she is part-time in her position and will be assisting in the front office during the middle of the day. And so if you come in during the middle of the day, you'll see Brooke. Her background is in writing, communications, and social media, which make her the perfect person to help Parowan City take our communications game to the next level. She will be helping with online content, updating and maintaining the website, and working on the newsletter. Look for exciting things to come, and remember to be nice on Facebook. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
All right, moving now into our action meeting. You know what? Well, I'll go, I'll go there as we get there. So the next thing on the agenda is item number eleven, and it's approval of Shane Williamson for planning and zoning as a commission member. And just to give you a little background on Shane Williamson, he was a Public Works Director at Bryanhead. He's currently serving as the Bryanhead Treasurer. He was with the Utah Department of Transportation for eleven years and received award and recognition there.
He wasn't ever the Public Works Director.
Why does it say that on the newsletter from Bryanhead from two thousand and sixteen?
I don't know.
Danny, fact check.
Was he? Because he went from the private sector in, in finance, in the financial...
Oh.
Who knew? I didn't. Everybody else did.
I'm sorry, something there.
I was like, no, 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 that's Aldo that was the public, sorry.
No, he was. He was the Public Works Director, which I really like, because he can, he can read plaats and maps and knows where, what things mean.
Feel free to throw fruit at me anytime.
That's okay. So for eleven years, he was the Roadways Operation Manager and Contract and Grant Analyst for the Utah Department of Transportation. To me, that's important, because he's used to reading, you know, language in contracts and also, you know, grant language, which is so critical in that you get things correct. And not that he'd be doing that on planning and zoning, but he understands the importance of word usage and language in documents. He's also a financial analyst, and he chose to live in Parowan to raise his family. He coaches Parowan High School baseball, and he's a super solid person who likes to fish, hunt, and recreate, and he cares a lot about Parowan and is concerned about our future and the growth here, and was grateful to be, I guess, identified to take a position on Planning Commission. So with that, I would ask for the council's approval for this new member.
I move to approve Shane Williamson for planning zoning, commission member.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. The motion carries. So this is one of the things I forgot to bring up, yes?
We're going to clarify, well, first of all, Rochelle had something to say or ask, I wasn't sure, but what, what position he's taking or anything like that?
That's what I wanted to ask. Is he going to be like an alternate or an actual member?
He'll be an actual member.
So is Tracy Wheeler just a alternate?
She's an alternate.
And she wants to stay an alternate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I was just going to ask that.
And I had a long conversation with her, just to be sure. Um, and same with Troy Hoyt. Troy Hoyt was basically, it's up to you. He's going to come and be here and serve as an alternate, so is Tracy, so we have a full commission. It's awesome. Thank you for asking that question, though.
And we'll just point out that, that we're losing a member of Planning Commission. We need to do something to recognize Larry for all of his time and efforts, but at the end of December, and it looks like we're not going to have any more meetings, that's why we need a new person to start in January.
All right, and we've been really grateful for our Planning Commission. We've had great attendance and involvement, being willing, people being willing to travel for trainings and things. We have a really great group of people, and we can't say thank you enough for the time that they put into, to that position, because those meetings are long. So now moving on to, and not just that they're long, they're important. I shouldn't just say that. They're really complex as well. So then item number twelve is set a date for special meeting to approve subdivision ordinance, and that actually could have come off the agenda, but it was just decided last night. So the meeting for Planning Commission to approve the subdivision ordinance, which would then cause them to bring that to a public hearing and then to City Council, is set for January eighth at six P. M. So that meeting will be the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will meet after that to discuss the subdivision ordinance, and they'll be doing the recommendation for council. It'll then go on to the council's agenda for the next evening for that vote from council. So that item doesn't need to be talked about tonight. Item number thirteen is the Par, do I need to table, do I need to do anything, or is it okay for me just to give that explanation? We good? Okay, because it was on the action list. Item thirteen is the Parowan Police Department contract for future truck leases, and I'm not sure if Chief Adams is going to talk about that, or if Dan Justin is going to talk about that.
Both, maybe Chief can come up. We've been talking about this for a while, as we're, as we're moving through our process, our process to replace the leases that we have. We used to be with Hink Lease. Hink Lease kind of got out of the business, and we were basically handed to Mike Albert leasing, and we were just happy that somebody accepted the leases, because Hink Lease was going out of business. We didn't necessarily select Mike Albert, we just ended up with them. And as we were getting ready to do two new leases next year, we looked into it, talked to different vendors that do state bid sales, and we heard back from several that Bancorp is really good to work with, and, and that we should consider using them. One of the advantages of going with Bancorp is, and by the way, tonight, we're not, we're not doing a new lease tonight. We just needed to sign the upfront contract that says we're going to be using them. The reason why we need to do that is because we're going to be ordering vehicles in January, which will then start the lease next July in next year's budget, but we have to get it all into the pipeline and get it working. And the first stage is to actually do an engagement with this company. The advantage that Bancorp has, that we discussed with them over Mike Albert, is that we can buy vehicles wherever we want and from any vendor we want, under state bid. We could buy local, we could buy wherever, and they just do the financing piece. Mike Albert is a large, they're both large companies, but they're really large. They want us to buy the vehicles through them. There's a little bit of vagueness as to, you know, is there markup, isn't there markup? They're, in other words, they're acting like more than the bank. They're acting as a dealer and the bank, whereas...
We're almost having to try to talk them in to take us on anyway, for how small we are. They, in, in the beginning, they, they weren't even interested in working with, you know, a six truck lease.
They'd bring the vehicles in from out of state and do one, one entire transaction and would end up with a lease. The idea of going with Bancorp, we can use, we can go to local dealer in Cedar and get a state bid, or we can go with one of the state bid contracts up in New, up in Salt Lake. We've had a lot of discussions with buying from Young Group, Young Automotive, that can buy any of the different brands on state bid. Bancorp doesn't care. They just say, bring us the vehicle, we can finance the outfits, we can finance the vehicle. All they do is just the financing piece. So it seemed like a good way to go. What did we miss?
Correct. I think you did good.
Does the council have any other questions for, on this item, from either Chief Adams or from our city manager?
Nope.
All right, so with that, we need a motion to approve, I guess, the contract to do the future truck leases through the Bancorp Bank.
Mayor, I move to approve the contract for future truck leases through Bancorp Bank.
I'll second it.
Oh, Bancorp, sorry, Bank.
Bancorp, Banc, Bancorp.
Yeah, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. The motion carries.
And just so you know, we will bring the actual leases for an agreement when it's time to sign the actual leases. And they did do a preliminary check, financial check, so that they could build an account, and they've approved us, so we're ready to do business with us.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Addy, while we're on this subject, do you want to share your good news? We didn't even dare talk about it, because we, it was just a pie in the sky.
Am I, am I going to jinx it?
I don't know.
Um, so we, we're involved in a, a grant that was written by all of the law enforcement leaders in our area, from Kanab to Beaver, Garfield, Iron County, and we were awarded two trucks out of it, and I, I just heard from Sheriff Glover in Kanab that they've been ordered, and we are likely going to be expecting them sometime in January, toward the end of January, probably. So if I didn't just jinx it.
So we didn't, we, we thought it was...
That'll put us above and beyond.
They said, is there anything you guys want to put in the grant? And we're like, we were in the middle of dealing with our trucks, and we said, yes, there were a couple trucks in there, thinking we wouldn't, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're asking for things like body scanners for the prison, or the jail. You know, they were asking for MRAPs, or the new Bearcats that will replace our MRAPs for SWAT, big ticket items like that, but I, we threw trucks in for some of the little agencies, and it looks like it's going to, like it's happening.
So you've got two trucks in that grant?
That is so awesome.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, that, that's...
So, so as we got to replace six trucks, we were going to try and stretch that out over three years, and we were going to be kind of risky out in that third year.
They're starting to have some issues.
What we'll do is we'll now put two, we'll get two new leases, and we'll take these two purchased trucks and replace four of them this year, and then two next year.
Wow.
So you'll own these?
We'll own these, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're still going to have to pay to...
And then we'll have to rely on keeping the value in that.
We'll still have to pay to outfit them.
Probably.
And that's going to cost them money, but...
Oh, yeah.
But it's not the whole...
The truck's the expensive part.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is a good positive. That's great.
What do you want to dare to hope and talk about it?
I know.
Yeah.
Usually these things don't happen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all of your hard work, everyone involved in that. Thank you.
The real wood is in the...
All right, we're now going to move to item fourteen. This is the approval to amend the master transportation plan to include the extension of one hundred north through the fairgrounds. So this item was brought to Planning Commission from Councilmember Burton, and he will now explain it to you. And Planning Commission recommended it.
Okay, it went to Planning Commission, and they discussed it, and we, well, we had a discussion of what it will involve, and of course, it goes through the, when it says through, I think it's, kind of, maybe clarify that. It's on, it's on the property line between the county and the city, where the line is contiguous. It'll follow that line around the old racetrack. But it will facilitate the county and their, their fairground activities and their expansion when they, they're planning on, well, they're doing a master fairgrounds plan, is that what you call it?
Mm-hmm.
And so this will be there in place so that they can take that into consideration, but it'll help them to, you know, when they exit, when everybody, when you have to egress everyone from those activities, and they have to do it all at once, this will facilitate and help the fair as well as the city for any possible future need. And I think that, I don't know, is there anything else?
No, I think we have a map.
Just to say that we did have the map when we talked about it, to send it to Planning Commission. Planning Commission reviewed it and was unanimous recommendation to, to do it, positive?
Right.
It's fairly simple concept.
Additionally, ingress, egress, and just traffic handling and things.
From one hundred, from three hundred east, east on one hundred north. It won't be a true straight, you know, follow the grid, I mean, north and east, southwest, whatever, but it will, it'll pretty much have one curve in it, so that's about it, so...
So if there aren't any other questions, and I think we've, we've all kind of talked about this, but getting it through Planning Commission with the recommendation was the next step?
I move to approve, to amend the master transportation plan to include extension of one hundred north through the fairgrounds on the line between the city and the county, on that contingent line.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, thank you. The motion carries. Thank you for that item. I appreciate you bringing that to the council. Moving now to the work meeting. This is a presentation from Outify for a text alert communication system, and it's for outages and updates on city utilities, road closures, and other options for citizen engagement for non-emergencies. This group came and presented to the power board. We had a daytime special meeting where they came in and showed us the entire, basically, the program, the software, and Jeremy brought this to us. He had recognized a need for it and had learned about it, and so it was something that we really wanted to take a look at, and that group that day really liked it as well, so now they're coming to the city council to share it with you. And I, you can introduce yourself when you come up, because I don't have a list of your names, sorry.
All right, I just thought I'd start here and introduce our team, and then Justin's going to come up and walk through this quick presentation. So my name's Joel Eves. This is Justin Johnson and Ryan Ward. So we're, we're the Outify team that has put together this product and this software. Why, why, why did we put this together? A little bit of my background, I have over twenty years' experience in the utility business, and I've worked with Jeremy quite a bit at U.A.M.S. I'm actually the director at Lehigh City, and this is a side thing that I'm working on. But I felt that pain, and I'm noticing, more than ever, there's two big pains that are coming up. And I thought of you guys and thought about Jeremy, because I know some of the pain you guys have experienced this last summer. And there's two things that are going to be happening in the future that I've noticed. It seems like after COVID took place, more people were working from home, and the tolerance for power outages is less than ever. And so people are less patient, they want their power back on as quick as they can, and they want to know what's going on more than they have in the past. So that's a big reason and a big pain we're seeing. The other one is transmission changes, and there's pressures there, and you guys witnessed that. They're going to start doing more power safety, public safety, power shut offs that we're going to see. I think you guys caught the brunt of that over any other city. So it gets hard to communicate to the community as a whole when those things happen in a two-way fashion. So we're going to do just a quick run-through, recognize that all of you weren't there, so we want to get you up to speed and show you quickly what this is, but leave time for some questions. So I'll give it to Justin and go over it.
Yeah, quicker. I think Joel explained pretty well what we are, so we can skip that. So what we did is we just took three real-life examples that your team has shared with us about some things that have happened to different departments throughout the last year, and we'll just kind of run through those scenarios and how you could have maybe better handled that scenario working with the Outify product. So I'll just click play, and then you can see a quick demonstration. So the first example is from a public safety power shut off. So you guys experienced a lot of these the past summer, when the entire city was shut down without notice. And so the, the quick video is going to show what you guys could do if another scenario, scenario like this was to happen. So in this scenario, this is Jeremy using the product, and he's just heard from Rocky Mountain Power that there's going to be a shut off. And so what he's going to do in the product, oh, let's see. Did I just hit? Maybe if you hit play, there you go. So Jeremy's just been notified that the power's going to be shut off, so he's going to come and create a new incident. He's going to give the incident a title. It's a Rocky Mountain Power shut off. He's going to choose the department, obvi- Um, he's gonna choose the department, obviously, this is concerning the power department, and it's a power outage, and he's gonna select the start time. So, he's found out that the, that the power's gonna be shut off tonight, and it's probably gonna be until about tomorrow morning at one AM. So, he chooses the start time and the end time of the incident. And then, because this incident affects the entire city, this is a map of Perahuon. So, what Jeremy is doing is, he's drawing basically a polygon, polygon around the entire city, which selects all the residents in Perahuon City. And now, he's gonna send out a mass notification to everyone within that area. So, because he selected the entire city, it's gonna send a text to every single person in the city, and the system's smart enough to know, if that person can't receive a text, if they have like a landline, that it's gonna call them, and leave them a transcribed voicemail. So, what he's done, is he's sent out a text saying that the power's gonna be shut off tonight at eight PM, we're expecting the power to be turned back on tomorrow morning at one AM. So, he's blasted that notification out to everyone in the city, and then also has, it's sent a voicemail to those who can't receive texts. And the cool thing about this is, on the backend, we've created what's called an incident map, which you guys have the power to maybe post out on Facebook, you could link it to your website. And the benefit here is, all of your residents can come to your website or to Facebook and see, um, an update on that incident. So, this is an, this is what we call an incident map. They can see that it's a Rocky Mountain Power Transmission Shut-off, they can see the start time, they can see how many people are affected, and they can see when they expect it to be restored. And those are the three pieces of information that we found most residents really like to know. How many people are affected, when, when is the, when's the estimated time of restoration, and what's the cause? So, you guys have the power to post this anywhere you want, so that your residents are informed of what's going on. Um, the second example is a, a resident reported water leak. We chose this example, because this is something that Aldo, um, mentioned that he would use it for. We met with him, uh, the week of Thanksgiving. Um, you can go ahead and press play, if that's okay? No, you're good, thanks, Callie. So, in this example, here's a map of the city, and what's happened is, a resident has texted in that they see a water leak down their street. So, that resident texts the number on their phone that they save as a Perahuon City contact, and what our system does is, it asks that resident if they want to report a water leak. The resident replies, yes, so what our system does is, it creates an incident on the map. So, Aldo is notified that there's a water leak on a certain street, and what he's doing right now, after he's investigated the incident, is he realizes it's, the incident area is bigger than what the residents reported. So, he's updating the area of that incident, so he selects a couple blocks, and now he's gonna send out a notification to everyone within that area, that the water's gonna be shut off later today, and he hopes the water to be back on, is gonna be back on by nine PM. So, very similar format, except in this scenario, a resident has texted in or called in, that they see an error in the city. That specific department's notified that there's an incident, and then, that department has the power to notify everyone in the area that's involved. So, he's just sent out a text, same thing as before, it'll send out a transcribed voicemail to those who can't receive text messages. So, that's what Aldo did in this scenario. I'll show you this one more time, um, well, I'll show you the outage map in a second. This is the example of what a resident will see. So, what's important to know is that the city, you'll be using the software on the backend to manage the incidents and communicate with your residents. But what we found is, residents don't want to download an app, and if that's how it worked, you wouldn't get a high majority to opt-in and actually download an app. So, we've made it so all residents have to do is save a contact on their phone. So, this resident texted Perahuon City, just like they would text their mom or their dad. So, they've texted this number that they've saved in their phone, named Perahuon City, that there's a water leak, and that's what the systems responded. So, the, in this specific example, someone new on that street has also texted in, and the system's smart enough to know that this person is near someone else that's texted in, so it's grouped them in an incident, and it just said, yep, we already know that there's an issue in the area, and we hope that the water's gonna be back on by eight PM tonight. So, as new people start to text in or call in, if they're within the same area, the system's gonna say, yep, we already know, we're working on it. That way, they, that way, they're involved with what's going on. Um, and this is again, the incident map. Same thing, post on your website, Facebook, but people can come in and see how many people are affected, when they feel like, when, when the water's expected to be back on, and what the cause is. And then, lastly, uh, this is one more that, um, this is from an example that Aldo shared had happened, um, I guess it would have been this year, um, because he just started, but I, I don't know all the details, but I know that there was gonna be some word work, some road work that had to be done. And so, uh, the department had to go out and knock on doors and ask people to move their cars, so the road work could be completed. So, the department went out, they knocked on doors, handed out flyers, to let the residents know that they need to move their cars, so the road work could be done. And a couple hours later, the vendor called and said that they needed to reschedule, and they had to push it out two days. And so, Aldo's team had to go back out, had to knock on doors again, hand out new flyers. So, there's just a lot of wasted time and effort on handing out flyers, and going, you know, wasted man-hours doing that. So, this is, in, in this specific scenario, this wa- this is what the department could do if something similar were to happen, um, if you press play. So, Aldo's gonna come in, he's gonna create a planned incident. It's a road closure, he chooses the department, he chooses the start time. And same as before, he's gonna blast out a text, um, to everyone that's involved. Just letting them know, hey, there's gonna be road work done tonight, or tomorrow morning, whenever it starts, can you please move your cars? We expect it to, the road to be fixed by twelve, whatever the end time will be. Um, he's gonna create the incident, you know, he's gonna select the area. So, instead of sending out people to knock on doors or hand out flyers, he's gonna come choose the specific street that's being worked on. So, he's gonna just strategically pick this entire street. In this example, you only see two homes, that's because we don't have all of Perahuon loaded in here. But that's gonna select everyone in the area, he'll select the time, he's gonna send out a text, um, notifying everyone, asking them to move their cars for the road work. And then, once he creates this incident, now, if, in this scenario, if he was to get a call and a vendor cancels or changes times, he'll just delete that text, he'll come and make a new one and update people, letting them know when the actual time will be. So, um, again, it's very similar, it's all about sending out texts to your residents, calling those who, um, are involved in an incident. And that's how Aldo would have used this in this scenario. Um, we can go to the next slide. So, there's a couple, there's a couple benefits that we feel like this can, can help Perahuon most. And the biggest thing is that we're designed to help small cities. There's, there are some companies out here that do similar things, and even from Joel's experience in Lehigh, what commonly happens is, for a city to use a tool like this, they have to find three or four different pieces or tools, three or four different pieces of software, and they try to make them work well together. So, there's a lot of training, there's a lot of effort. In fact, there's a city we know that spent over three hundred thousand dollars putting something like this together. So, like I said, these systems exist, but they're super expensive, and they're not built for small cities that use it every day. And so, where we're unique is, we work specifically with small cities like Perahuon, um, because we want you guys to be revered as, you know, for all the good work that you guys do to help your residents. And then, there's two things we felt that can benefit Perahuon most. The first is your reputation, you know, do your citizens trust you? They, do they believe that you care to keep them involved? Do they believe that you're doing your best to, um, fix issues? And of course, you do, but how do they know that? And a tool like this is gonna really help you guys make them feel like they're heard, and make them feel like you care to resolve the problems that you face on a day-to-day basis in a small city. And the second is the source of truth. Who controls information in Perahuon City right now? Who controls, um, the, the information that's going out to the city? We've talked with different people in the city, and it sounds like Facebook, there's a certain Facebook page right now that's doing that, um, which happens, you can't always control that. But the benefit of using a tool like this is now, Perahuon will control the information that's sent out to your residents, and you're able to, um, keep them informed of what's going on on a day-to-day basis. And what we did, uh, lastly, is, we took the time to work with each person specifically that's gonna use this product. And the first person we spoke to was Brooke. Obviously, Brooke is a new, oh, she's gone, maybe. She's a new hire in the city, and her role, as Mayor Halteman pointed out, was to improve communication for the city. So, that's what her job is, that's what she's planning on doing. And, um, there's, I bolded, I bolded, I'll show you why I bolded, some things that they said. But these are a couple things that Brooke brought up. Um, she said, this will allow me to communicate to the city exactly what the cause and intent of the incident will be, and I won't have to guess. Um, and the last thing she said was, is I'm usually a yes person, but this is really gonna help me do my job well. Um, that's something that Brooke had said. Um, we worked with Jeremy. In fact, that's how this whole process has started, was Jeremy and, and Joel had talked, and obviously, after the summer you guys had, um, you know, he felt that this is something that could really help. And what Jeremy had said, that when there's an outage, it's an all hands-on-deck situation, and the goal is to get it resolved as quickly as possible, and the power department does not have time to stop and make Facebook posts, or answer calls, or communicate with the residents, because they've gotta fix the power, and they don't have time to do that. And so, if he can get some quick pieces of information to Brooke about the, that size of the outage or the area, so that she can take that information and post it out to the city, then he can focus on resolving the outage instead of answering phone calls or, uh, dealing with Facebook posts. And what Jeremy had said is that, um, Outify can help him get the correct info out to the public, and that Facebook won't be the source of truth anymore. And then, lastly, Aldo, he actually came up to Utah County, which is where we're at, and met with us, and he, he just gave me kind of a list of what he would use this for, so snowstorms, maintenance areas, project areas. But the, I bolded, um, each person, and this was unsolicited from me, each person says that they can use this tool to direct, um, the public to your website, or, um, to Facebook for up-to-date information about what's going on. So, the biggest thing, I think, is that you guys get to control the information and get to control, uh, what's going on in the city. So, that's what Aldo had said. Any questions?
So, I just wanted to, to talk about this for just two seconds. Um, one of the nice things about this is, the system is smart enough to do, to handle communications around the clock. Um, often, we have middle-of-the-night outages, power outages. The customers in, with, using this would be able to get real-time data and interaction with the city without, I mean, it's one thing if it's in the middle of the day, Monday through Friday, somebody could call the office and say, hey, what's going on? And we can tell them. In the middle of the night, which is when a lot of times these things happen, they can watch an outage map, they can see inf- real-time information that's directed and affected to them. Um, oftentimes, I hate it, because I'm, I'm bugging Jeremy to say, I know you're in the middle of trying to figure this thing out, but we need to get information out to the public. And he's like, dude, just let me fix the problem. And I'm like, I know, but we've got, like, educating our, our public is important, too. We need, we need to know, as soon as you get a second and you have an estimated time, if you could please, you know, so we can put a post on Facebook, and sometimes that information is lagging so long, that people are hungry for information, and therefore, they're going, they're just, they're just going rampant. Somebody says, hey, I heard this, or something with that, or, they're just angry. The concept of this is that it will, it will do this. It will, it will, it will be communicating at all times with our customers. Um, whether or not we go with these guys or not, we have committed to up our communications game. Um, we need to do something. Would, do we, and, and, and how are we gonna do that, right? Is it gonna be, you know, Brooke is just one person, she's a, she's a part-time person. Is, is everything gonna go through her at all times of the night? You know, there's an outage, somebody calls, and she's putting stuff on the internet, trying to interact with people as best we can. Um, when we've had some of our outages, they've overwhelmed the phone, the phone systems, and of course, we're telling people, we don't know, we don't know. Until we do know something, and then we're trying to put something on Facebook to try to cut down on costs, it's just been rather erratic. So, we need a system. These guys just happen to offer an all-in-one, and it's not free, it's not budgeted for. There's no real way to come up with the cash through saving by cutting something else. So, we just have a hard decision to make, and we don't have to make that decision tonight. In fact, it's just on a work meeting, we can't make the decision tonight. But what do we do? Do we allocate some money, which can be split amongst the utility companies? Probably, power would take a big, big chunk of it, would probably spread some to water and, and sewer and things, so, some of those other services. Um, there's the emergency management side of this, that we can communicate with our employees. One of the things that he didn't highlight that I really liked, is we can identify high-risk individuals in the map.
Yeah, that's right.
And if, and we put them in there, so if we know somebody that's on oxygen, for example, and there's an outage affecting them, we are aware that we have somebody in the city that is at high risk, that is out of power, and we can communicate especially with them, or we're just aware of it, so that we can, we could reach out and say, hey, it looks like this outage is gonna be longer than three hours. You may want to go to one of our, one of the sites where we have some generator or something, so that you can do something. I don't know.
So, Sharon wanted to say something.
And she-
You just said-
Oh, she's back.
It just sounds like to me that this is a really good program for the city, that we can give the correct information out instead of the rumor mill. It's on Facebook all the time.
Yeah, amen, sister.
What is the cost?
It's about a dollar per resident.
Dollar per resident?
Yeah, so, a dollar per meter, so it's, it, yeah, per meter, sorry. Um, the total aggregate cost for the first year is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, we had considered, there's different options, we thought about, you know, considering working with the council, we talked about. If you paid for the year upfront, maybe we give you like a twenty-five percent discount. Um, if we need a split-up setup fee, I mean, there's different ways we could look at doing this, because we know you guys need the help, but-
So, say that, you said a dollar per res-
Dollar per meter, sorry.
Dollar per meter.
Per, per electric meter.
Oh, man.
So, you have about fifteen hundred, Jeremy?
Per meter per month.
Per, per meter per month.
Per month.
Yeah, per month, okay.
Yep.
Estimating it, it would cost us around, what did you say, twenty-seven thousand? I was, I was thinking it was less than that, but I was guessing on di- maybe a different number of meters than you-
You were probably guessing on, um, without the setup fee, if we did the discount, you paid for it all upfront.
Okay, 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 yeah. No, I, and I was factoring, I was thinking ongoing.
Yes.
Obviously, as we have more meters, that cost will change. There's a setup fee, a one-time component, and then the annual renewal. So, if we do this, I was thinking of how much the annual cost would be.
Sorry, yeah.
Going on. So, you said- Somewhere around twenty thousand-ish.
So, you said one dollar per meter per month?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, if we don't-
Is there no different charge in the meter size? The panel size?
No.
It's just, it's just a meter, it's not the size of the panel.
That's right, yeah.
So, let's say it was four o'clock in the morning or something, and we didn't have a middleman like our communication specialist, but Jeremy drew his map, and, you know, did his, um, area. Would that then update live on our Perahuon website?
Yeah, it would. As long as you have, as long as whoever is running the website has linked the outage map to the website, yeah.
So, that map's just live on the site all the time? If anything happens and people go there, they can see what's going on, even if there isn't a communication specialist in between?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yep, that's right.
And the, the really intriguing possibility for the future, since we have, what do you call our smart metering? What do you call that?
AMI, or, who do you-
Automatic metering, infrastructure, is that, in the future, as they continue to develop their software, we do have automatic read, that if there is an outage, a meter could report itself as an outage, which could automatically populate as an outage on the website, with no human interaction. Which is really cool. Would be, would be really cutting-edge at that point.
Yeah, that's right.
That would really be nice.
So, help me with these figures, I'm getting hung up.
Sorry.
You said a dollar per meter, that's fifteen hundred, that's a, you know, and then, a year, that's eighteen thousand dollars.
So, it's, it's a dollar per, I think you have just over fifteen hundred, it's not exactly fifteen hundred. So, it's a little bit more every month, that's how it comes to roughly twenty thousand dollars. It's like, Dan and I talked, it's like nineteen-four, nineteen-five or something.
But then, you have your, your, uh, phone, what do they call it, was it IVR or whatever, feed?
That's all, that's all included.
That's all included into that.
It's like nineteen-three, I said twenty grand, just to make it easy.
Yeah, it was, I calculated nineteen-seven, but I figured a different number of meters, so.
So, the-
Where's the, you said twenty-seven?
There's an upfront cost of, of eight thousand bucks.
Eight thousand upfront. One time?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, one-time setup fee, and then, ongoing yearly would be about twenty.
Okay, so the one times, it would be twenty a year.
Yeah, that's right.
After that.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Alright, does the council have any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, from a follow-up perspective, how would you like to address this?
I'd like to have this as a action item.
Well, you need to find out in the budget how you're gonna take care of it.
Yeah. Next year, you know, next, this is a meeting.
Well, that's July.
So, we could do one of two things. We could, we could bring it back, talk about a budget amendment. We would have to do some figuring of how it would impact our budget, because we would spread it across different, the different utility companies, decide whether we're gonna have a general fund component or not, ju- based on what, how we thought we would use it. Primarily, it would be outages, that's the name of their company. Outify is designed around power outages, water outages, and so forth. So, most likely, the utility companies would be split that way. Um, but we, we could either wait and discuss it at budget time, we could, um, we, if we, if you really wanted to do it, we could do a mid-year amendment and add it in and go, right?
Could it be shared with public safety?
Yeah, um, so, Addie, we didn't involve him, we, we, we thought that may, mainly, mainly along the line of utility outages, but, um, if we- But, um, if we had to close a road, if we had to alert citizens, we do still have, um, what's called Everbridge, which is something the county subscribes to, county emergency manager. And we pay a small portion of the county's Everbridge bill. Everbridge is slightly different, it is a push notification system, but it can push to anybody within an, an area, all cell phones. This, they have to be in our database. Um, we're only paying about twelve hundred, I think just north of twelve hundred dollars a year for Everbridge. When we originally looked at this, we didn't know what our Everbridge bill was. We thought about maybe getting rid of Everbridge and using the cost savings to pay for this. You know, it would pay for about a month's worth only and we would kind of lose that component. But we definitely, if we were creative, could maybe use this in some other ways regarding public safety. But it would definitely be more of a, um, it's definitely more of a utility thing. But I guess we could pu- do a push message that said, you know, open burn or, you know, you could theoretically, um, you know, street closings, that's general fund. But most likely, this is more of a utility thing. I'd say we split it amongst our utility companies if we do it.
Could you bring us back a br- budget proposal and break down so we can, then we can make a decision?
Yeah, because I feel like I don't wanna wait until July or whenever we do our budget, which is-
It's, it's-
In the summer and if we're ha- hopefully, we don't have issues again this summer. Fingers crossed, but I don't know.
We always have some issues, it's just this summer was like the-
Out of the normal.
Worst-case scenario, maybe not worst-case, but a pretty bad-case scenario.
The other thing I-
I could do a budget proposal.
I remember from the presentation that we didn't talk about tonight that I just thought was important, was from an efficiency standpoint, if Jeremy gets or public works or power gets a certain type of alert or a certain area, it could help them know what it is before they go out and also be able to identify where it is. Do you wanna speak to that, Jeremy? Because I thought that was really, really a feature that helped with efficiencies. I know recently I had an outage and it was a porcelain fuse. And I wondered, well, could they have gone out once if they'd known kind of where it was and what was affected? Because you're like, it's probably a porcelain fuse.
Jeremy, hasn't Rocky Mountain made some adjustments?
Yeah, they've made quite a few.
Because they've been petitioned to do that.
Yeah, especially on the transmission line that feeds Parowan. They declared it is not as, uh, critical as far as fire.
Right.
Um, so, that's what helped us later in the summer after we sat down and met with them. So, yeah, I think, um, but it is still gonna be a more on-
Oh, I'm not saying it won't be an issue, but I, hopefully, they've made some concessions.
Yeah, no, I think that outages in general should improve. They, they have plans to upgrade our transmission line in, this next October, which will get a lot of the valley load off of that transmission line, a lot of the outages shouldn't trip. So, things will definitely get better. Um, but as to what the mayor was saying, um, yeah, it's, I mean, when we get a text and can kind of narrow down the area just from that and not having to, to scratch our head on where it's at. And we've seen multiple Facebook comments where people get on and say, hey, I live in Parowan, my power's out. And we're like, we don't know, even though we have an outage, they wouldn't even call it in or whatever. We had one just the other day and the lady found out that it was her main breaker on her house. But she got on, uncensored and posted it and we're like scrambling, who, where's this lady live? We didn't have an accountant of that name and it wasn't even our outage. But just the, the people that, you know, spread that information, and I think that's the biggest, the most critical thing. But really knowing that there's an outage just from a text and looking at a map is really gonna save time, you know, in truck rolls and stuff too, so.
Well, I'm like-
I think there's a lot of benefit to this.
And what they were saying is just like getting ahead of the rumor mill.
Yes.
Because I'm also sick at the Facebook stuff. And I know I have texted you many times of, and I know you were so busy, but like when people are texting me or calling-
Yeah.
And I'm like, I don't know, I'll see what I can find out. But then I feel so bad, because I know you're trying to fix issues.
Well, and a lot of times I wanna know a restoration time before I put out too much information. And if it's a Rocky Mountain power outage, for me to get a restoration time is hard too. But I know I want to push that info out too, but it's just the timing. But to get ahead of the rumor mill is gonna be fast. I mean, you gotta be really quick.
You do. If the light flickers, people will be on there.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's on Facebook before you blink.
I know.
But I think just, just starting with better communication, I, you know, I think that's a, it's a good goal to have. And with Brooke coming on board right now, I think it's a great time to implement something like this that, you know, we've gotta start somewhere. And I've, I've lacked extremely in my communication, but like you said, usually I'm on the outage or trying to figure out restoration time before I... And I'm not a, a Facebook commenter or a poster, I don't have a Facebook, but, so, um, I think something like this is gonna be more beneficial to me than trying to get on Facebook.
And if we don't do this, then, then what? Do we come up, you know, do we look at other things? You know, usually you get what you pay for, you know, but there's, there's other, you know, we've had other presentations that was apps. You know, um, he, he, he mentioned there's, there's companies that will sell us apps that we use to communicate with our, um, all of our customers. Of course, that requires them to go download the app. Uh, um, in this case, it's all done via text.
And it's nice too where you, it'll pinpoint like where the area is, like-
And it's two-way communication, text back and-
Yeah, and I think what, except that-
Rather than just one mass text going out, but then there's no response later, you know, it's, it's-
I think this covers a lot more, is more well-rounded than the other presentations that have come before us.
Yeah, well, I mean, we try it for a year and- You know, it's not like we're locked into like a ten-year contract or anything either, you know. Try it for a while, see if we use it, we like it.
And I was thinking-
A few other cities in Utah using it now, um, we could reach out to them, see how it works for them.
We've been looking at upgrading or doing something different with our website. Even to have a live map is, makes our website look so much more polished and better at communicating critical information.
Oh, and it's important to say, let's say you're completely technically challenged to the point you don't even text, right? Um, this will, this has an automatic system that makes a phone call and, and gives the message via a, um, I don't know what you call it, a voice that says, there's an outage, yada, yada, yada. Robo-call, yep. So, it isn't not just exclusive. See, one of the problems is, is Facebook is pretty good. Not everybody uses Facebook. The website is great, but not everybody uses the internet. So, this allows us to push information out to people that don't do any of that stuff as well, without any additional bolt-on piece or anything that's included in what they do.
Right, thanks, Jeremy.
Well, I'm supportive, but I think we need to look at it from a budgetary perspective. And if it'll get rid of Facebook, I'm all for it.
Yeah, so maybe next council meeting, bring us back, um-
I'll put together a budget thing, yeah.
Add that to your list of many things to do.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And if you guys need to get on the road, we understand.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming down.
And if, and if one of the council wanted to reach out and quiz you guys, they would be able to do so? Okay.
Thank you. Um, the next item is another one I needed to amend. I found out that the person that was gonna come and do a presentation on the intersection of three hundred East and Center Street, he got called out for a work thing, so he's gonna be on the next agenda, so we can skip item number sixteen.
Now, that one you ought to actually table.
Okay, so I need a motion to table item number sixteen.
I'll move to the table item number sixteen.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. The next item is the annual report from the Parowan Bryanhead Chamber of Commerce. And Lindsay Swiderski is here, she's the executive director.
Welcome. We're happy to see you.
Thank you.
I'm happy that you remembered to come do the report, we didn't have to bug you. This was one of our requirements, if you remember, that she come do it.
Oh, wow, I definitely did not forget that this is a requirement. In fact, I've been thinking about it for three months. So, I remember I was at the city council meeting when Rochelle asked for a quarterly report and I always thought that was completely reasonable.
You didn't think it was reasonable?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, absolutely. I think when something like this is going on, you definitely need to have concrete information that makes sure that it's working. And I'm really excited to report that I feel like it really is working, so, um...
Do you wanna introduce the other members of the chamber that are here tonight, just because people might not know them?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you for having the Parowan and Bryanhead Area Chamber of Commerce here tonight. My name is Lindsay Swiderski and I am the executive director. Uh, we have Danny Abbott, our residing president of Chamber of Commerce, and Judd Sudwigs, our chair, board, our chair for our board of directors, and also Christina Harris, our treasurer. So, I'm so glad they're here to support. Um, a couple new things that you'll notice right off the bat is our beautiful logo. The Parowan and Bryanhead Area Chamber of Commerce logo. Uh, of course, we'd love to thank our local artist, go-to artisan, Judd Sudwigs, for creating such a thing. And of course, our beautiful digital creator, Tricia Harris, for putting that together after a lot of brainstorming and some thinking and a roundtable about what our logo should look like. So, uh, with that, we've also come up with a new vision for our Chamber of Commerce. Our vision is to create economic vitality, promote civic involvement, create shared community engagement, support and promote local business, create and foster a healthy business network and foster relationship with our local government. Our mission, the mission of the Parowan and Bryanhead Area Chamber of Commerce is to promote and protect the interest of its members and our shared communities. So, those are just a couple things right off the bat that we took care of, um, as far as business. Um, I would first like to thank the Parowan City Council and Bryanhead Town for the opportunity to, uh, for, for the opportunity for me to help and support, bye, guys, see you later, support building our joint communities. Uh, Parowan is kind of a ski town, we're right at the base of Bryanhead, so it makes sense for our communities to sort of work cohesively together. So, this has been really, really exciting and I'm really excited for twenty twenty-five and what's to come for everybody. Um, it has been an absolute pleasure learning more about our Chamber of Commerce and our local businesses while coming up with a plan to help them thrive together. I do think that whether Parowan and Bryanhead stay the same size of population or if they grow, it is absolutely quintessential to have local, hard-working businesses in our communities to serve the local economy, citizens and our visitors. We all need places to eat and shop while our friends and family may need a place to stay. Our visitors need somewhere to gas up and nourish while having fun visiting the many attractions that our small corner of the world has to offer. Uh, from finding the best cinnamon roll to ice skating, to riding the gap, to skiing and snowboarding, to hikes, pickleball and disc golf galore, we live in an amazing place that offers amazing things to our locals and our visiting friends. I believe in the power of community engagement and awareness and I feel the Chamber of Commerce is achieving just that through working with our local government and our amazing community volunteers. Although I've only been in this position since September first, I would love to share with you some of the growth that we have experienced thus far. First, we'll start with membership. Um, our chamber membership, I remember coming to one of the very first meetings when Molly was president and I was, uh, I just wanted to be involved as soon as I moved here with Chamber of Commerce. And I've seen it kind of go up and down and whatnot, but at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, just kind of this lull of, you know, mediocre, uh, membership. So, I would be happy to say that our membership has grown by sixty-four percent in three short months. So, we started with thirty-four active Chamber of Commerce members as of September first and now we are fifty-seven strong and counting. That's our membership, um, stat for meetings, yes. Feel free to ask questions.
Is that okay, or do we need to wait till after?
No.
So, is that, what, what sort of a balance between Parowan and Bryanhead businesses is that? Just curious, just totally curious.
Yeah, so we've, we have, um, probably just a little handful from Bryanhead, but mostly Parowan. We even have some theater city people that have come over to join the Parowan Chamber of Commerce because they kind of wanna be in sort of this, I mean, economic area with, uh, you know, we don't, we don't have all brick and mortar members. Some of them are right out of their homes, working their entrepreneurial businesses out of their homes. So, they want to be able to get their businesses out, uh, far and wide. So, uh, we're still working on, um, a good amount of membership in Bryanhead right now, they're super busy. So, I'm gonna go, you know, door knocking as of the spring, the mud months, if you will. So, um, let's go on to meetings. We definitely have an increase in our meeting attendance. Um, our August twenty twenty-four meeting had about eleven members in attendance, whereas our November meeting had eighteen. Our December meeting, just yesterday, boasted twenty-five members in attendance with two visitors. I have currently also added Zoom meeting links for our Bryanhead members and our out-of-town members and this has been a great addition. I would love to make sure that all of you are on the, um, our email address, our email list so that I can send you out the Zoom links too, so that you can just jump on and see what's going on. Love to have you guys there. Um, our meeting structure has also changed a little bit. Um, instead of, you know, our board meeting and our general meeting has always sort of melted together into this big sort of business thing. But now we're really keeping our board meetings to business and our general meetings to, uh, learning and education and networking for our members. We want them to really walk away with some education, whether it's for business and in life, motivation, um, let them know what events we have going on. We always have a highlight speaker, which is one of our highlight members. We highlight their business, let them tell them, tell us about themselves. And then I always give a bit of a motivational message because I'm, you know, a cheerleader. We all need that once in a while without a big costly seminar. So, that's one of the perks of being a member of a Chamber of Commerce and our meetings are really super fun, right, guys? Yeah, okay. Um, let's go to events. We've had three successful events, uh, from September till now. It's a lot, but that the end of the year is kind of that she-bam of events that we have for Chamber of Commerce. Firstly, Winter Wonderland, we love our Winter Wonderland. We had another successful and slightly less stressful, because the weather was very lovely, um, year of setting up our holiday display. Uh, I wanted to report the amount of volunteers we had. We had approximately twenty volunteers come to help on our big setup day, which was the Saturday prior to Thanksgiving. And then we had another whopping thirty volunteers on Thanksgiving Day that helped us set up for Winter Wonderland. And we, you, you all know who you are, I mean, just talking to the, to the interwebs. And there's definitely people in here who helped, you know who you are, we thank you so much. There's no way we could have done this without our community volunteers. So, that's a really big, big effort. Uh, coupled with Winter Wonderland was Hometown Holiday and that comes in the same, it's kind of the, the lighting of Winter Wonderland and Hometown Holiday is the same day. So, we've got the buildup for Winter Wonderland and we have our Hometown Holiday, which is our, for those who don't know, it's an outdoor holiday fair. Sometimes you call it an outdoor holiday market, um, it just depending on the year of the theme. But this actually originated back in COVID days when you couldn't go inside and we had to be masked everywhere and people still wanted to shop, and what people wanted to get out and socialize and do things. And this has sort of become a Chamber of Commerce, um, tradition. And I love it because, again, it touches those, those, um, business owners that don't have brick and mortar shops and they're able to offer their goods and services and their items and their goodies to our, um, Parowan visitors and our locals and things like this. It went off without a hitch this year, it was great. We had ten vendors, um, all of, I'm sorry, twenty, I said ten, there was twenty. Twenty vendors, all of whom were very happy with the business they received. I executed an excellent marketing campaign, if I do say so myself, that had, um, it had a raffle participation card where you had to get it signed at both vendor villages and then they were, uh, turned in to be entered for a raffle, uh, with, for a basket full of goodies from all of the participating vendors. And congratulations again to Ashley Chittister, who won a whopper of a basket and it was great. Um, I did recently with Molly, we did a little demo presentation with Placer AI. Do you guys know what Placer AI is? It's one of those programs where it shows the algorithm of how many like people are getting off the freeway and staying for like more than two hours, which kind of gives us some data on how many visitors we're having in our town at certain events or certain things. And, uh, they did a demo and I was just like, hey, why don't you just go ahead and put November thirtieth on there? The twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, that would be great. So, um, we found that, uh, just, just about two thousand, six hundred visitors, we had an increase from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, same weekend, same exact Friday, Saturday after Thanksgiving. So, we had a, uh, two-point-six-thousand visitor increase between the Friday and Saturday, which means this is a great and effective statistic to show just how successful the city's Christmas in the country and the hometown holiday is, um, to give our little town this great little boost for our local economy. In fact, I was talking with Casey from Dry Lakes and I was just curious. I was like, how much foot traffic did you get, was it like good? Was it like good? Did you have enough? And she said, because she can track in her system exactly how many new customers come in, because they give like a package of free ground beef for every new customer. Go see Dry Lakes, you haven't ever. 265 new customers walked in her store between Friday and Saturday. So that just goes to show there's a lot of, a lot of foot traffic going with these events that we have going on in our beautiful little town. Do you have any questions about those events?
You might want to mention that they measure by cell phones. So it's not, um, like, don't really know how they get those numbers. They do it by individual cell phones and unique cell phones, but it's no data breach. They have all of the rules in place to do that, but that's how they give us those numbers. It's anonymous.
It is anonymous, yeah. Yep. And then our final event was our, our election party last night that we had, our little Christmas election party, which was in lieu of our general meeting for December. So that was our general meeting for December, with, like I said, mentioned before, 27 people in attendance, which is pretty great for December. Everybody's running and rolling downhill. So 25 of them are members, two are visitors. It was super exciting. The purpose of the meeting was to obviously network. A big thing of Chamber of Commerce, they want people to know people. We got to network and tell each other about one another, because that's the only way we're gonna like, hey, oh, my cabinet door broke. You know what I'm gonna do? Oh, you gotta call Christina and Dave, Dave Harris. They've got cabinets. Did you know that they're in town? You know, it's stuff like that. It just kind of ripples through town, and we keep the business local, and we keep our local economy alive and well when everybody is in the know about who's here and what people have to offer. So networking is huge. So we did a little fun Christmas speed networking, which was super, everyone was like resistant. And then they got in line, and they just wouldn't stop talking, which I loved, so it was great. It was super great. They got out of their shell, and everybody was just chit-chatting away. I got some pictures, which was super fun. And then, the most important part of the meeting was to introduce our incoming nominees for our incoming election that we have. So we have five positions that are coming available in January up for election. Danny, our outgoing president, his, his position is up. Vice President Christine Price, her spot is up. Our secretary is going to be officially voted. She's kind of standing right now, but for Shay Bayless. And then we have two board positions that are available. What I think is so cool is that when I said, hey, does anybody want to be on our board? Or does anyone have anybody in mind for our board? And they just started trickling in, and they're really excited. Like seven strong, amazing, excited people to be a part of the Chamber of Commerce, which is huge, because you never want to like beg someone to be a part of the Chamber of Commerce. You want people to want to be a part of it. And I've even got some people who are like, yeah, I did it for years, but I think I'm ready. This is great. Everything is going really well, you know? So really exciting, and that was, we had our, our meeting yesterday for that. So we also have a couple chairs that we're gonna, a membership chair and our Main Street Beautification Chair that we're gonna, gonna be filling. So I'm super excited in the next quarter of next year to introduce to you our new board. Talked a little bit about our logo already. Conferences, in this position, I was required to attend two conferences a year, and I did one for this year already. And I'm so glad, I was honored to be able to go to the ONE Utah Summit. It was such a plethora of education on leadership and growth, and it was just quintessential for like knowing what to tell my people, you know, what to tell our members, and how to inspire them, to inspire others, and to inspire business growth and things like that. So it was so wonderful. I did a little, I was invited by RUC, the Rural Utah Chamber Coalition of Utah, for a little seminar breakout, and I had no idea that I was gonna get an award. And I got an award for Rural, the Rural Growth Award. So they're even recognizing how much we're, we're doing here in Perrin and Bryanhead. So, toot, 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 toot. Thank you. Other things, in addition to all of the above, been working diligently to reorganize our chamber records, updating our website information, updating and cleaning out our Google Drive, kind of dusting the cobwebs off of everything, making sure everything is working well, making sure our contacts are updated and keeping up with social media posts, of course. It's huge. We have barely any following on there. Trying to really ramp up the algorithm for social media. So if you're not following us, please go follow Perrin and Bryanhead Area Chamber of Commerce. Social media is huge. That's really how we're gonna get out there with our social engagement. Current projects I'm working on and going into 2025 include creating a big Chamber of Commerce handbook. This is gonna be a handbook that all of our board members receive, so their roles are unwavering. It's right there, written. Also, the bylaws, know how to run a meeting. Everything's gonna be in there. It's gonna be just like a little handbook for everybody to take, so there's no question, which I love. Handbook, I would love to establish a junior Chamber of Commerce for our little entrepreneurial kiddos. We have a lot of kids that like sell art, bake sales, things like that here, even beaded bracelets and stuff. So just teaching them, I just love that, because it's something that we can give our kids, this entrepreneurial spirit, so they can be in control of their destiny later, and they can stay here if they want to. You know, they don't have to go to some big city. Also, creating quarterly events that involve more of the community, like, actually, I'll give credit to Judd on this one, for like a Taste of Utah, Taste of Perrin, something like that would be super fun. Heading up the Main Street Beautification right to our Tier Two grant, and obviously fostering a strong relationship with Bryanhead and its members as well. I am due to present to them the same sort of report in January, and have been invited for a Q and A session at their Strategic Planning Retreat at the end of January. So I'll be involved with that as well. In closing, I would love to thank anyone and everyone who is involved with Perrin and Bryanhead Area Chamber of Commerce. Your participation is so pivotal in the success of our local businesses and our local economy. So thank you, thank you. And thank you, City Council, once again, for giving the Executive Director position an opportunity to show what a difference a Chamber of Commerce can make. Do you guys have any questions?
I feel like I should clap.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. So Janelle Zajak is, she's wonderful. She's writing to T-Mobile for the third time to fund the roof on the Old Rock Church. And it would be, I think, the grant somewhere between 180 and 200,000, which would allow us to replace the roof and tie the front wall in, which is a significant step in the restoration and rehabilitation of that building, preservation as well. And I helped answer a few questions that she was going through today, and two of them, the top bullet was, are you a member of the Main Street USA program? And so that was a big deal, because when, so years ago, like in the eighties, Nancy Dalton and Frankie Lou Bentley established that. There are probably other people too, so I'll probably get some calls tomorrow. It was also this person, you know? But we rekindled that, and then the new chamber, you know, you guys, you and others have made sure that stayed in place, which apparently has a lot of significance, because it's come up now on three different grants that I've filled out. Are you a member of Main Street USA? And not only are we a member, we're one of only two cities that are in Iron County. So we are in Cedaris. And that obviously carries weight with some of the state grants, because, again, it's a question. And so I really appreciate you doing that, because if we end up getting that grant now this third time, and it's never asked before, if you're a member of the Main Street, if you're a credited member, and we're a Tier Two, which is significant. If we get it this time, I'm gonna believe it, part of it had to do with that affiliation. And that'll be a way to monetize the chamber and its benefit to the city, because that's a significant grant.
And I do believe that we, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Danny, but I do believe you have to have an Executive Director in your Chamber of Commerce established in order to get the
Tier Two affiliation.
Tier Two affiliation, yeah.
So it'll be really neat to see if that comes through, because then you can add that you assisted in that grant, because that's important.
It will come through.
And it's not easy. You have to go to trainings and workshops and travel and do a lot of paperwork and be on a lot of calls. So it's so great that you guys have, and Danny's been huge to carry that through. It's a lot of work.
Applause to Danny for 2024 Main Street USA stuff here in Perrin. He's been the man where that's concerned, so. Any other questions?
Think we're getting our money's worth.
Yay. Thank you.
And I'm glad you're the Executive Director. I was hoping for that, because you're just spunky and outgoing, and I got just a great personality.
Thank you. I have, I have something, it's funny, because I was doing the meeting and my motivational message and stuff, and then we go to the roundtable. Do you know Bob Whitelaw?
Yes.
Very involved in the chamber for years and years. And it got to him, and did you, do you have anything to say, Bob? Well, I'm just still getting used to Lindsay's energy. So, thank you. I'm super excited about what 2025 will bring us, and I hope I've got a whole slew of good things the next quarter.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are to item 18. It's the tree code update discussion from John Dean. How are you gonna follow that?
I know, it's going downhill rapidly after that one. But I'll make it quick. So looking at probably, I don't know, 10-year-old shade tree doc that we have, let me just read the, one paragraph that we'd like to rewrite and submit it for approval with the City Council in the near future. The old one says, "All owners and occupants of each parcel of real estate property, real property within the city shall be responsible for watering and general care of trees located in public streets which," sorry, "which front on their parcel of real property. All pruning of such trees can be done at the, at the expense of the owner or will be completed by Perrin City employees. All pruning and proper maintenance shall be completing using verified techniques and by certified arborists. And in no event will pruning be allowed, which will be detrimental to the healthy growth of the said trees." So that's, that big word "or" is a pretty interesting word. So we'd like to submit a different paragraph in there for 21.14.040F2. It would read, "All owners and occupants of each parcel of real property within the city shall be responsible for watering and general care of trees located in public streets which front, which front on the parcel of the real property. All pruning of such trees shall be done at expense of the homeowner with the city reserving the right to maintain trees, including removal, at its own option when necessary. All pruning and proper maintenance shall be completed using verified techniques, and in no event will be pruning be allowed, which will be detrimental to the healthy growth of said trees."
The biggest problem with the way it was worded was that ambiguity of "or."
Yeah.
And I think the reason why it, it said "or" was because we wanted to preserve the city's ability to maintain trees in the right of way. But to really transfer that, just like we transfer the expectation of snow removal on the sidewalk, keeping sidewalks clear and, and functional, that's, that's the homeowner's job as well, as keeping the borrowed ditch clean. There's just certain things that the homeowner's expected to do, even on the city property in front of their house, and trees has been one of those. But the way it just says, "or the city will do it," we've had homeowners that are just like, well, yeah, city to do it. Do it, city. And so it's been that, that's been that problem. And then also certified arborists, like, there's a lot of companies that do tree maintenance that are not certified arborists, and it's kind of un, it's a bit much asking for that.
Yeah.
And this was, the Tree Committee wanted this change done, right?
Absolutely.
This language, obviously work meeting here, this was language that John asked to come up with something that would accomplish what they were kind of wanting to do. Tree Committee hasn't seen this language, but this is a, just a proposal. We could tweak it however you wanted to, but.
It was, yeah, it's just a proposal, and it's interesting. I'll just add a little tidbit of, before people blow up Facebook, you know, they said, well, that, that's a city easement. So I got a little bored tonight and drove every street on this side of Main Street. And nothing's wrong with this, but, you know, a lot of people use the easement to park their cars. Actually, 138 vehicles, and I counted tonight. That's including boats, trailers, and one forklift. So with that, you know, easement is being used pretty good. So with trimming trees, that could be just part of the neighborhood.
Thank you, John, for addressing this. We tried to
Sorry.
This has been, that "or" has been an issue for years, and nobody took it on, so thank you.
Yeah.
Because we had a lot of people that, yeah, if it says "or," what are they gonna do? City, do it. So.
And then one other comment, actually, at your meeting last night, at the planning zoning meeting, 14.14.10 is shade tree section. Just one little paragraph, it's sort of interesting. It says, "Prior to ins, um, insuance of occupancy permit for," oh, here it goes, right in front of me. I'm trying to read microscopically. "Is, um, shall plant a tree within property boundaries. The shade tree shall be of type and variety approved by the Shade Tree Committee and shall have a minimum of one-inch diameter base. Said shade tree shall be planted on the lot of or property on which the residence is located and may be located at the discretion of the lot owner." So that, that's a pretty interesting one, because it was mentioned, you know, property rights, and to tell somebody that you have to plant one tree, one-inch diameter, but then the Shade Tree Committee has a list of trees that aren't desirable to plant, and then they have desirable to plant. So, you know, it's one of those, you know, this is very minimal, jumping on board with, with property rights. So hopefully, this paragraph can be taken out of the subdivision.
Yeah. Hopefully. This, you know, you can't even get a home occupancy, according to this, without planting a tree.
And, and just, just so you know, this one will come to us one way or the other, because it's part of the subdivision code that's being updated. As of last night's meeting, the Planning Commission decided to strike that whole paragraph. But it'll come to you guys, and if you want to put it in, you can put it back in, but they, they voted to, to bring it. It'll go to public hearing, but they decided to strike that.
Yeah.
But it was, it's, that's, that's come up a few times recently, and it is not on our checklist when we are doing our final checkoff before a certificate of occupancy. Where's your tree?
Where's your tree?
Um, it just hasn't been a thing. I mean, obviously, we encourage trees, but that says "shall" before occupancy, so. And it has to be a specific type of tree, too, so.
And I'll confess, I moved in six years ago and
No tree.
Don't have a tree.
Well, I moved in in 2008, and we planted a tree, but I don't know if it's on the approved tree list.
So, okay.
John, I appreciate this, because I was on that Shade Tree Committee, and this was really something that bothered me, and they wouldn't listen to me. So I'm glad that you're on there.
All right. Any other discussion on this item, or anything else you were asking for as far as feedback from the council, John?
No, sorry.
Okay. Right. Moving now to item number 19. This is the power rate update and discussion from Jeremy Franklin.
Sorry, and I hate to go back, but do you want to bring that upper one back as an action item? It would have to be an ordinance to change it.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay, you can review it, vote on it at that point. Okay. Callie, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Okay, thanks, Callie. So if you remember, in summer of '23, I think, we hired UFF So, if you remember, in summer of twenty-three, I think, we hired UFS to do a cost of service and rate study. And for fiscal year budget twenty twenty-four, we did a rate adjustment. It was a, a net zero, um, change on, in our rates, but we adjusted the way the billing was. Um, during that rate study, they gave us a five-year projection and recommended that we make small increases annually rather than get behind, um, on our finances and have to do a large rate, um, increase, uh, like, say, in year five. So, um, normally we'd approve these for the fiscal budget, which would have been in July of twenty-four for this year, but we didn't get it done in that, at that time. So, um, we met with Power Board and went over, keep going to the next slide, Callie. Went over the, the rate, um, study that they had done for us and they were recommending a two-point-two percent cumulative increase for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and we can go, uh, by each rate class in the next slides. Um, the first one, yeah, let's go to the next down, yeah, um, is just our lighting rates. We only have about a dozen lights that are, are customer-owned, that they pay a monthly fee on. We're kind of trying to phase these out. A lot of these are in backyards, um, hard to access, um, and we don't really feel like it's our business to light people's backyards. So, as these lights fail, we're just removing them. So, this rate eventually will go away. But, um, as you can see, fiscal year twenty-five's recommendation is to go up twenty-five cents. So, currently, they're paying six dollars and twenty-five cents and to go to six dollars and fifty cents monthly. Um, so that one's not a big deal because there's, I think, a dozen or so people. Um, the next rate on the residential, uh, uh, rate, you can see for fiscal year twenty-five, um, right there, it says cumulative change, that would be the, the increase, um, to the residential rate. Um, one thing to note, if you look under the power cost adjustment, it was showing in fiscal year twenty-four is two-point-one-seven-six cents and it's, uh, year two is one-point-zero-one-one-seven-six, which is a penny difference. Um, UFS recommended that we, we basically, where our PCA has been hovering around two cents. Um, it's been right at two, sometimes, um, two and a quarter. Um, their recommendation is to move a little bit of that PCA up and embed it in the rates. Um, monetarily, it's not a change to the citizens by doing that. It's just, uh, um, better way to track the actual rates and stuff. So, the recommendation for year two on residential would go from point oh-eight-nine-eight to point oh-nine-five-nine. And then the base charge, monthly charge, would go up fifty cents and the demand charge would go up a dollar fifty. And on the bottom there, you can see the, the average residential customer's bill was, is, uh, ninety-six dollars and fifty cents and it'll go up by two dollars per month at a, at a two-point-one percent increase. Um, and if we go to the next one, which is the single-phase commercial, um, the, all the commercial kilowatt-hour charge and, and demand charges are the same. The, the biggest change on the, on a commercial rate is the monthly charge. Um, as you'll see, as we get to a larger transformer, which costs a lot more, the monthly charge is, is higher, um, just to be able to recoup those costs. Um, so this rate, um, they, um, figured the best, uh, rate increase would be two-point-six percent, um, cumulative across the single-phase commercial customers, which would be a seven-dollar-and-sixty-eight cents per month increase in their bill. Um, so the next few rates are all commercial, so the kilowatt-hours stay the same, but the base charges increase. So, if you want to kind of scroll through those, you'll see, like, three-phase gets a little bit more expensive on your monthly charge, but you can see the rates, kilowatt-hour, demand, and PCA are all the same. This one is a two-point-four percent increase with about, uh, eight dollars and seventy-nine cents monthly for the average customer in that rate class. Scroll down to the next one. Um, this one is a hundred-and-fifty underground transformer. Um, their, uh, cost of service study showed that this one should actually take a smaller increase, one-point-four percent, um, for that rate class, but about a twelve dollars and forty-six cent monthly increase. Down to the next one. As we just get bigger, um, you can see the monthly charge goes up. This one's two-point-three percent with a fifty-three-dollar-and-two-cent increase monthly. Um, next one, Callie, I think it's a five-hundred KVA. So, we're getting to, like, the big transformers that cost a lot of money here. Um, their monthly charge is up to a hundred-eight dollars. But kilowatt-hours and demand charge is the same as the previous commercial and that's a one-point-six percent monthly increase with about a sixty-three dollars and eighteen cent monthly, uh, increase. And then the next, uh, one, we get into our agriculture rates. We have three or four customers on this. Um, and you can see that there's a larger increase, um, percentage on these, um. The study just kind of showed that these, um, rates should be treated more like a single-phase commercial rate. You have the same infrastructure, they're still using the same power daily. Um, other than in the winter, they're not, but they're not being charged kilowatt-hours if you're not using kilowatt-hours. And the, the recommendation out to year five is to basically make this rate equivalent to a single-phase commercial customer. Um, it shows larger increases as they, as right now, they pay us much smaller kilowatt-hour rate. Um, UFS recommends that we phase that out over time. So, for these customers, it'd be a ten dollars and forty-two cent monthly increase on their usage. All right, next one. So, this rate is a time-of-use rate. We have one customer on this, it's a large industrial customer. Um, and this was set up originally when we had a lot of excess power late at night and we had cheap prices late at night, but, uh, that is not the case anymore. A lot of times, our daytime rates, uh, for, on the market for power is actually cheaper because of the influx of solar. So, UFS's recommendation is either to move this rate to, uh, a three-phase, um, large commercial rate or to slowly increment it to the, up to five years to where then it would be on the five years. We could either move it right now because that.
And they don't expect that to ever come back?
Yeah, yeah. With, with solar, in the, in the daytime, rates are way different than they used to be. So, time of use was a, a thing that a lot of customers would do to incentivize people to run from, you know, ten PM to six AM when power was cheap, but that's just going away now. So, their recommendation is that we slowly phase this out to be, yeah, the, the same as a three-phase, five-hundred underground commercial. Um, so as you can see right now, in twenty twenty-four, their on-peak energy rate's ten-point-one cents and their off-peak is, I think that's point oh-five-nine, so just under six cents. So, year two would go to ten-point-seven and seven-point-six cents, give or take, um, and then be equal to three-phase underground in year five. So, that rate would be about a three-hundred-and-ten-dollar monthly increase, um, to this customer.
Is this just one customer?
It is just one customer on this rate, yeah. And that, when this rate was first set up, um, they, the city wanted to incentivize them to move here and, uh, you know, it was a good business, it's still a great business for us, one of our larger users. Um, but at, this rate was actually, I think, supposed to be a five-year rate and I'm sure they've been in business well over five years and we didn't look at it. So, now's about as good as time that they need to address it. Um, uh, Power Board's recommendation, it was, was to, to basically follow the, the study out, out to year five, approve it, but do it on calendar year instead of fiscal year. So, where we're six months behind implementing this, when it should have been done in July, basically, at the next action meeting, approve it, we'll put it on the January bill and just do it calendar year versus, uh, fiscal operating budget year. Um, I don't know if there's anything else from Power Board. We discussed this last, Power Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, that there was a recommendation to approve all five years. And, and obviously, if something changes drastically, we can get back with UFS and say, "Hey, these have happened, you know, things have changed, we need to make adjustments, that's fine." But, um, but yeah, basically, just implement it on a, on a calendar year.
So, their cost adjustment for this one customer will drop to a penny now?
Uh, yes, but, but really, all that did was, uh, on our original rate study, that the energy charge, say, so twenty twenty-five, where it says ten-point-seven-oh-six-three.
Okay.
The original study would have, was actually nine-point-seven right there. We basically just moved a penny up out of the PCA into all the kilowatt-hour rates. So, ju- just, we don't really want the PCA to go negative, but we don't want it to be four or five cents where we used to have, just keep it in the penny range, which we've been in the two-cent range until, um, unless we make this adjustment, then we're around the penny. Could be lower, could be half a cent. Uh, things are trending in a good direction. October's bill was a little high, so our PCA went from point oh-two-oh-five to point oh-two-two-two, so about a quarter-cent difference. Um, but it's been trending in a good direction. Um, so I think the very first page or second page, it shows a cumulative across all rate classes, a two-point-one percent increase every year for the next five years, which is, which is definitely, you know, it's definitely money out of people's pockets, but it's not a large increase.
And that was the recommendation a year or more ago and we've kind of held, so it's time.
Yeah. Yeah, year, year one of twenty twenty-four was a, basically, a net zero increase. We just changed the, we added a residential demand charge, changed our base charge a little, dropped our kilowatt-hour charge, but it was net zero to the average customer. And this next year is project, proposed to be two-point-one cumulative. Some get a little higher, some get a little lower. That's based off of cost of service.
So, our two city council members that are on Power Board are David Harris and Sharon Downey. Do either of you have anything to add or say about that meeting and that discussion?
Councilman Harris wasn't there.
Yeah, I wasn't there.
Oh.
Sharon, Sharon did.
Hey, Councilmember Downey, are you still on the line?
I was, I was, I was there, but I think this, this is a, a rate increase that we need to do, that you hate to do, but power rates are gonna go up. We, we went through a real volatile rate prices the last, probably what, journey, two years?
Yeah, a year and a half, two years, yep.
Yeah, and so, hopefully, with the new administration and some changes that are hopefully going to come through, hopefully, the prices should start to level out a little bit. But the cost of everything is still going up.
Yeah, but what are we gonna do if, say, our prices get better? Are we gonna just continue to just keep raising them even though our prices didn't get worse?
Well, so, I mean, the PCA follows our price for power, so that's gonna fluctuate monthly. If, I mean, if it keeps coming down, then that will, even if we approve a rate increase at two percent, whatever this is, yeah, the PCA model will continue to fall lower.
Well, you, like, PCA tends to go to zero, but you're, you're basically saying, like, right now, we're gonna add, if it's been two, two cents, we're just gonna put that up into it. So, it's always gonna be there.
Well, so, we're gonna put a one cent up into, but I'll still follow it monthly, so your PCA charge will, will flow from, instead of being two, it'll be one cent and below or right around that one cent mark, wherever our power costs come in. So, we're not changing the, the dollar figure of what's coming out between the power cost adjustment and the kilowatt-hour charge, what's actually, you know, the cost to the customer. We're just changing the way it's billed.
I mean, if a lot of people don't know, but Parowan is like the second lowest in the state of Utah.
Yeah, there, there's a.
Kills a lot.
Yeah, everybody's rates are slightly different too, so if you looked commercially, we could be lower or higher, residents might be lower and higher and it's hard to compare apples to apples. But I, I think that, uh, UFS fills a two percent over the next four or five years, keeps us where we need to be and we can always, if we, and if we get something drastic, where, where my cost to serve a customer comes down, transformer costs come down, we can always look at it, you know, again, like, that's, they said, if you want to approve it for a few years, but come twenty twenty-seven, definitely get on.
Yeah, but like, it's a drastic change, it's like, we need to stop adding to the bill.
Yeah, or if it's a drastic change the other way.
You know I'll be a huge fighter on raising power bills, so.
Well, let, let's keep in mind that when we talk about adjusting the base rates, we're talking about adjusting for the overhead of running the entire power company. The PCA deals with a power bill as it comes in and goes. We were, we were talking about doing a base rate increase long before all of the drama hit. We knew that in the next few years, we would need to do some small base rate adjustments. We did a study, we hadn't done base rate adjustments for quite some time. UFS has been telling us, I mean, this is what covers our overhead, this is what covers.
Cost of operation.
Cost of operation, of operating the network.
Yeah, but we went, what, like seventeen years or something like that?
Without a base rate adjustment.
Yeah, so.
We went a while, yeah.
And, and we have a healthy power company. Um, not to be scare tactic, but they're like, if you don't now do some of this increase, you're gonna be slightly less healthy, slightly less healthy. That's, with the, with the fluctuating wholesale costs that we pay for power aside, this is, this is a financial decision for just the health of the company as a whole, so.
Jeremy, what is the average increase for a resident's gonna be?
Um, so, eh, the typical, the average, this, uh, Chris's numbers show the average bill, um, in twenty twenty-five for a resident, uh, was ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. So, be a dollar-ninety-six per month higher on an average customer. So, if your bill's typically three-hundred dollars, it'll be three times that almost, about six dollars. But if you, your typical power bill is a hundred dollars.
About a dollar per hundred.
Yeah, a dollar-ninety-six per hundred.
Dollar-ninety-six.
So, two dollars per hundred, I think.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And I kind of want to put this out there just because as a person, that's an elected official, we often hear feedback from the community of, "Why don't you just go with Rocky Mountain Power?" And so, I, Dan and I were both able to attend a committee meeting and it was for the House Public Utilities, Energy and Technology Committee that is basically reviewing and fighting the increased cost from Rocky Mountain Power. And we stayed after and met and, and very strongly confirmed that we need to keep our power independence. And I think that's kind of a dig we get from our community is, can't you just do something else? But I was reassured once again that we are doing the good and right thing. And I don't know if any other council members ever feel those kinds of, what we need to do, what we really need to do, but I just wanted to say that with this because, I mean, Jeremy keeps, not just a watchful eye, but he's a respected member of committees at UAMP and is engaged on a regular basis with navigating all of this for us. But it was, um, it was recommended that if we had more of these little independent power companies as a state, we'd have a lot more power security and I am proud of us for maintaining that.
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits that come from being public power, for sure.
Did anyone else hear that or mind the one that gets back on that?
Oh, no, you hear, you all hear about it.
You're not alone.
I hear about it, but I was a no before I got on this council. And after what I've seen and watched, I'm a definite, no way, you know, I'd go Rocky Mountain, so.
Thanks for watching out for us and staying on everything. And I was really impressed with this group when I met them last year. I, I mean, they do this all over the state and they are geniuses.
Yeah, they're good.
And their direction is, is solid.
Yeah, yeah. So, this is just a work meeting, so we'll bring it back for action. But if there's any questions that come up in the meantime, email me, call me, whatever, dive deeper into it.
There's one other thing to consider. If we vote to put this in for the next five years, we would also need to decide what time of the year, would it be this time of the year for the next five years? Would we do it this time of the year, this year, and then in July in the future years, or what? The nice thing about this time of the year is power rates are usually at their lowest amount versus adjusting it in July when people are already at their peak of the year, so that's.
I, I think Power Board's recommendation was to do it calendar year, do it now, every, every year at this time of year, which, like Dan said, makes a lot of sense. July, it's hot.
So, put it on the action menu for, or, or action agenda for January.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Sharon, did you have anything to add?
Mark, were you asking me something?
I just asked if you had anything to add.
No, it's, this is, the power rates and power increases and all that, it's just, it's just hard to solve it for everybody, but it's something that has to be done and it's very minimal. And I'll tell you, we've got D-Vest Electrical Company. Our guys work their tail off and give us back in power when anything's out.
I agree. All right, well, thank you. So, we'll move now to item twenty, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up. And we'll start with Councilmember Topham. So we'll move now to item twenty, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up, and we'll start with Councilmember Topham.
Okay. So, um, an email was sent out about, um, the fire department. Um, our chief had resigned and I think you guys all got that email. And then I did see that we have posted, um, the job. So hopefully we'll get some, um, applicants and we'll do that process over again. Um, so I, I attended their meeting last Wednesday and it was a really good meeting. Just, it was, it was just a great meeting. Um, I don't know how I got put in charge of that, but I called for a vote, um, and asked them, um, to vote an interim chief and, until, um, the city can provide a, a new fire chief. Um, they recommended and asked Mike Trimmer if he would, um, just be the interim chief again and he, um, agreed to do that. So, um, I'm grateful for his willingness to step up again and help, um, the fire department to continue to move forward. Um, they've been doing a lot of different trainings. They did, um, extracations, mental health, and then just, uh, yesterday they did AERPAK training. So the fire department is moving on and continuing the good that they provide for our community. So, um, I've heard some concerns that, well, what's gonna happen to the fire department, all this stuff? It's, the, it's in good hands. We're still in good hands and it's still moving forward and they're still getting their trainings and, um, being present in the community. So, do you guys have any questions about any of that?
I just wanted to say we'll use the same, um, interview board that we used last time. Everybody's still good to be on the, on the interview board and go through the process the same as we, we just did.
And when does that position close, just so the public knows?
Twenty seventh.
Okay.
And if you know of somebody that would be good or is just interested, ha- wants to reach out with any questions, we're happy to answer any questions and, 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 uh, just wanna get a good, good pool to interview.
Um, okay, so with the theater, they did the variety show. I don't know if any of you guys were able to attend that, um, right after Thanksgiving, um, right after the lighting ceremony. Everyone loves it. I always hear good things, um, I wasn't able to attend, but I've just, I always just hear the good and the bad, more good.
I attended and it was very good.
Awesome.
Very good.
Just, I've heard, and then social media, these were all positive things about the variety show and the lighting ceremony and just the things that Parowan does, um, to bring the community together. And I know a lot of people came, there were quite a few people from Cedar that came over here to, to, um, our lighting ceremony and I've just heard a lot of good things about it.
Very well attended.
It was very well attended. And it wasn't as cold as most years. I don't feel like, anyway. And then, um, I was al- able to go around to like the holiday bazaars and things like that, um, a lot of turnout, um, especially up at the fairgrounds, there was just a lot of people, a lot of vendors, just a lot of chatter. Got to, um, talk with a lot of great people here in Parowan. They're just, everybody's out and it's fun. And I forgot to wear my earrings that I got. But anyway, they're cute little gingerbread mans. Of course I have to wear those, 'cause I teach elementary. And then another plug in for the elementary Christmas program is happening this coming Wednesday. Um, they have a nine o'clock and a six o'clock. Um, usually the morning one's not as heavily attended as the night one, so if you guys want to come out and listen, it's just for me, and I've heard this from other people, maybe not just me, but it's just a good way to get into the holiday spirit. Um, it's just, kids are just fun and I enjoy it and I know our community enjoys it. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Well, I went to. I went to the Chamber of Commerce gig last night and that was interesting. Like, it can't be boring when Lindsay's running the show, 'cause she doesn't stop moving. So, it was, it was quite neat though to see how many people were willing to, to be on the board or that, I, I, I can't tell you, I've been doing business in Parowan for twenty-six years, how many people. I've never seen a chamber actually have that much fire in it, so I thought it was pretty neat. But I, I think she's gonna do really well with this, so. But then I miss Power Board, so that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
I, 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 um, had the privilege of going to two, uh, separate, um, gatherings this last couple of weeks. Uh, the Safety Action Plan, um, for all of Iron County. And I'll just read this little short paragraph again. Iron County is in partnership with surrounding communities preparing a, a countywide transportation safety action plan. The Safety Action Plan will analyze transportation safety needs, identify high-risk locations and factors contributing to crashes and prioritize strategies and improvements to address them. The, the goal is to plan to help reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries, injury crashes throughout the Iron County. So what's nice about this, they listened to all of us. Um, we had maps in front of us, um, the data just for Parowan, um, it was, it was great because when we met with UDOT earlier, you know, they said, oh, you don't have enough crashes. You only had one crash in, you know, five or six years. So this one actually showed, um, some, s- the serious spots that they're looking at is, uh, Highway ninety-one, uh, two hundred south in Maine, uh, Center Street of Maine, and then going all the way down to four hundred, uh, north. And then also, um, down the street on three hundred north, uh, by the high school. And so, these are around town, people in the cyber world. Um, they're at the post office, you can, um, they wanna hear everybody's feedback, so it's just not the city council. It's not just the, you know, the few out there, but if you want your voices heard, um, there's a QR code or, um, a website, ironcountysafetyplan.com. So hopefully they get as much information and we're, we're asking to get this information to them in the month of January so they can accumulate everything up. And hopefully we'll just go together as a community or a county and pick out different projects and bundle them up, 'cause that's the way to, they said to get, um, grants for this, uh, program. So it's, it's, it's the first phase, it's not gonna happen overnight, but it's the first phase for this.
Can I add one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
So I've learned about different plans, that, how they run them and there are a lot of similarities. But on this one, um, if it's not on this plan, it won't get funded. So that's why we need to be sure that anything that's a concern to our community is on this plan. And it, they won't go back and go, oh, you know? So that's why we're all really working to get this information out. There's some extra ones on the table. There's the act- the actual report that they presented, presented us that day that tells us about the different incidents and things. If you wanna thumb through it and look at it, it's interesting. Um, and so, yeah, we're, we're all kind of like, there are some things we all intend to do, but don't get to it. If you, you just really get to this and at least get your things identified, because I think we're gonna get funding and I think it's gonna be a really good process for us. Instead of our little one-offs that we try to do as a city, one of the examples they gave is, what if we just, um, do all the dangerous pedestrian intersections in Iron County? And we get funding for all the dangerous pedestrian in- intersections in Iron County? That's more likely to get funded than Parowan has two hundred in Maine, if that makes sense. So I thought that was a really good direction, but I just want them to get flooded with concerns about our intersections and other things that you see in Parowan. And another one that was brought to my attention recently is we used to have sidewalks all the way around the school, um, to get sidewalks back all the way around the school. So it could be all the schools in Iron County have to have sidewalks around them. And that could get funded in, in one round of, of grant. So it's, it's really, I think it's a great collaborative approach that has potentially a pretty far-reaching outcome for Iron County.
I did also watch, while we're on the subject, I did watch a, um, it was an hour, something like that, hour and a half, um, presentation on getting ready for, um, the Phase Two. I mean, obviously this will take some time, but when this plan gets done, then we'll be in the implementation grant process where we actually start applying. They gave a lot of good information on that, um, and it'll, depending on the grant, some of them are fifty fifty, some of them are ninety ten, ninety grant, ten match. And there's a few that are out there that are a hundred percent, depending on different types of projects and what it is. So, um, anyways, got a lot of good notes about that.
And Councilmember Downey was there as well. Do you have anything to add?
I, I was just really impressed with them and I felt they were listening to us. But we, I, I feel like John says that we need to, we need to have people call in too. But I really feel they were listening to us and I think we'll get some, some added help with what we need to have done. With fingers crossed, of course.
And my hope would be that they get a lot of response from Parowan, because if they get a lot of response when they go, they're doing all this database, matrix kinds of stuff, if they get a lot of feedback from Parowan, then Parowan's gonna stand out a lot. If they hear almost nothing from Parowan, then it's gonna be the assumption that Parowan's fine.
Did you see, is there one of these down at the elementary school?
Oh, I don't know, I'll give you one though.
Yeah, like I'll.
They're at, at both tables in the, in the, uh, post office, so everybody goes there.
We have them here in this office too.
Okay, well, I'll take a couple and.
Yeah, there's some, there's the little.
We'll put them over at the school too, 'cause we get a lot of traffic at the elementary.
One of the biggest things on the thing that I watched is data-driven and sometimes that's the, the hardest thing to show. But when it comes to actual funding, you better be able to show data, which the frustrating thing about that is, we would rather prevent something than have data of accidents and fatalities and bad injuries to then support the need. But they need, it needs to be data-driven and you need to be able to show how what you're doing is going to fix a known threat or problem.
And then if you go to that website, um, it actually has a whole bunch of information, sort of what we received at that meeting. So a lot of, a lot of good information. And then one other thing's, uh, the Utah Trail Network, um, and I'll just make this quick, sort of like this. We, we sat around a map and we had Brian Head, um, Brett from Brian Head and, um, sat down and talked about some of the areas that we'd like to have, you know, it's sort of a wish list with UDOT. But their vision is Utah will, UDOT will construct and operate a network of paved trails throughout the state that can, connects Utah as of, of all ages and abilities to their destinations and communities. So we talked about how, how we can get it from Parowan to Paragona, to Enoch, to Cedar City, so.
Brian Head.
And Brian Head, sorry, and, and, and a whole bunch of great ideas and, and they took a lot of notes and we drew all over the map of this area and, uh, once again, they, they were very, um, pleased with, uh, with what we had to present to them. And I think that's it. Oh, and I don't know if we have to vote on this or not next time, but, uh, the Shade Tree Committee was, talked about meeting on a quarterly basis. So I'm not sure if they have to go to vote, did you say?
I think so, because it's, isn't it on their, um, information on the code that they meet monthly?
So in January, when we, when we were looking at the, um, updates and things, we wanted to look at some administrative code updates. There's a lot of different things that we've talked about looking at. Um, one of the things recently that we've talked about is some of these meetings may be going to a quarterly and updating the code if necessary. Some meetings, some committees definitely need to meet monthly, um, planning and zoning is twice a month, but some of them probably could be quarterly and it would be just fine, maybe economic development, maybe Shade Tree, some of those. So we'll, we'll bring those up and talk about them.
And we're, we're looking for a couple of new members for the Shade Tree Committee and a new, um, chairperson. So if you know anybody that loves trees, have them contact me.
Thank you. Okay, Council, I'm gonna go out to Sharon, 'cause she's next by order. So Sharon, what updates do you have?
I don't have anything upstairs and I haven't already spoken.
All right, thank you. And Sharon did review our patchwork byway interpretive signage and I appreciate her work on that committee. It's, um, one that's been really active lately with our new interpretive signage all the way over to Panguich and it's been a big project and she's helped with the photos and she's been at the meetings and she helped with the, um, the proofing. So, thank you, Sharon. All right, Councilmember Burton?
Okay, um, Planning and Zoning has been very engaged since our last council meeting. Um, so I'll just, uh, go over the meeting of, uh, what is it, twelve, the, on the fourth, but I thought there was, no, the twentieth is when this started, I guess. There was a, uh, a, uh, proposed, uh, lot division in Valley Heights, but that was tabled. Juniper Hills, there was a presentation for another, um, high-density type of a project there behind Juniper Hills. It'd be, I guess, similar to this one down on four hundred north. And there, there wasn't any decision there, recommendation. Uh, how did that end then? I was trying to remember.
I was gonna say, that lot division.
Is coming back.
Didn't get tabled, it got pushed forward to council.
It did?
But they, yeah. They, they, there was a recommendation made. I can't remember if it was, it was a split vote, but, um, I think it.
I think that was.
We'll get you the information, but it, the next step is city council, they wanted to bring it to city council.
That was, yeah.
They just couldn't come in December, um, the applicant, so it'll be in January. But it is ready to come forward to city council.
Okay, 'cause it was a split.
It was a split vote.
That's what it was.
It wasn't unanimous either for or against.
Yeah, and what was the deal on Juniper Hills? I mean, it seemed like there's.
Juniper Hills was just, um, they needed clarification on, um, on a recommendation, on a setback issue. And it was also a split vote, but that was on a preliminary process. So it's far from ready to come, but it will eventually come to city council, because it's a, it's not a typical subdivision. It's a, um, like a PUD condominium type deal. So it will eventually come back through its process and then to city council on that one.
Okay, and then they just, at that meeting, they just ca- they reviewed the master transportation plan, rev- uh, recommendation on one hundred north and they reviewed the subdivision code draft. You know, did a review on that and then pushed that forward and then they drew. There was some discussion on the Conex code revision at that meeting and then it was pushed forward too. And then in the next meeting, they had the, the, uh, public hearing on the public, on the, uh, amendments to the, uh, subdivision code and the transportation plan. And then they decided they had to do more, more, uh, editing on the subde- the, uh, division code. And so there was another special meeting called and the master transportation plan, of course, came to council tonight with the recommendation on the one hundred north extension. And the storage container was just pushed forward. And then they had the special meeting last night to finish reviewing the subdivision code and that's when they decided not to have a meeting on the eighteenth, uh, next week or whatever. And then go to the eighth of this, uh, January and have a public hearing, because there wasn't enough time to notice that public hearing for next week. And then that will follow with the council meeting on the following ninth, night, the ninth, for that subdivision code approval. It's been a lot, that, that book is sixty-three pages and when you go page by page and whatever, paragraph, word, whatever, it's pretty.
Page by page twice.
It's pretty encumbering and pretty involved. So they need to be commended by the time the, the Planning and Zoning Committee, for the time they put into it and, of course, Larry heading that.
And they were willing to do a special meeting, um, they were re- they were ready, ready to go, but we decided that it probably wouldn't look the best to have a special meeting near the holidays to do a public hearing. The public hates it. The public hates it when you hold public hearings on special meetings, sometimes it looks like you're trying to sneak something through. So, that's why it was decided to wait till a regular time in January. So, we do think of the public, even if they don't always show up to a public hearing, we do try to think of them, so.
Oh, yeah, everybody was willing to do it and, and it would've required a special council meeting and so.
On a Saturday. A special meeting on a Saturday, right around Christmas.
Yeah, or Monday.
So, we were grateful, they've gone above and beyond.
So, and, and I don't think, I mean, there's due diligence, I mean, it isn't like they haven't made effort. All of this is to meet state requirement to get this done by the end of the year. And so, they've done everything they could to get this done. So, I don't think anybody's gonna be able to find fault with them. The, uh, let's see, yesterday morning, the, the water diver- um, recharge, uh, oh, my, group met and there was, uh, the, uh, the geotech report was gone over. And, uh, the percolation for the two recharge sites was, you know, the positive recommendation. They're still gonna come back with the study on the clay, whether they can use that in the site. But then there's three structures that are being studied and evaluated at this point to, as far as, uh, cost and, and feasibility. So, it's moving forward, in fact, they're gonna meet next week again. Uh, yeah, and then go over this and see if we can't get this, a decision made on that diversion structure so that we can move forward with that project. And then the water board met last night and did a quick meeting so that the planning and zoning could meet following. And there was a discussion over what, um, uh, lots that are combined, what to do with the, uh, what is that title, entitlement?
Entitlement, water connection, entitlement.
Entitlement, connection. You know, where you have a combination of lots. So, that was tabled and gonna be moved forward with some more discussion. And there was a discuss, well, there was a little bit of discussion in the irrigation meeting with the, the, oh, Dry Canyon Pond. Well, let's see, a bareback up, there was an update from you, Dan, on that, uh, that cartridge trial of the, kind of, on treating the spring water. And so, that's a positive, uh, that can be something I, that's gonna be evaluated. And they're gonna continue to pursue that because of the feasibility and the cost savings and, and be able to implement that. And, and then this morning, they met with the BLM on the Dry Canyon Pond. And I think there was a lot there that was accomplished. I mean, few things that's gonna be required of the city on water applications, check on that and funding contingencies. But, uh, anyway, there's a lot going on, there's a lot, you know, involved. And, and things are moving forward, I think, quite well. I did want to just mention, 'cause Jed's here and, uh, Councilmember Dean, we, and myself, we got that wreath up at the cemetery. And if you haven't seen it, go up and look, it looks nice both day and night, thanks to Jed. He was the captain, we, there was the three, the threes, uh, what-
Three Stooges.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say the three Amiga, whatever, but it's the three Stooges, but I guess, but anyway. That was a great thing to get, to have to recognize the veterans and all those, you know, deceased at Christmas time. And it's really nice. And as Rochelle mentioned, Winter Wonderland was great, the parade was great. I think John and I, we decided that was the real Santa Claus and we were gonna ask him what we wanted for Christmas. And John wants a boat and I was gonna ask him for a horse and a new saddle, so.
And he gave me coal.
Yeah, well, I didn't get anything. So, anyway, and then that variety show on this Christmas line was just wonderful and it was well attended. And there was a great spirit there, they, you know, that variety show had a great Christmas theme, you know, for Christlike, uh, theme. For all those kids singing those songs I haven't heard for a long time. And that, uh, Erica Smith with that, you know, that, the presentation with that sign language is very emotional and spiritual, so. And then looking up at the P of that lighting, I would say it stands for peace. And I hope that we all experience that this Christmas. And I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Well, I think you probably knocked out the rest of the meeting with that update.
Did you go, what about the Rock Church? Is that since we last met?
The meeting at the old, well, I'll let Dan go then, wait, Jeremy, where are you going? Did you have anything? Okay, I'm teasing, I'm teasing both of you.
You can go, Jeremy.
Thank you for being here, appreciate you. Um, okay, City Manager, what do you have?
I'll be quick, because I gotta go home and watch my Forty Niners win, um.
Go Rams.
Airport grant, um, we are having to do two new grants in order to finish the airport runway project, which was done last winter. Don't even get me started, but two, two new grants are gonna have to come through. They were for, they were for the overages, the, um, the, the amendments that were done. So, working through that, you'll see those come through. Um, also related to airport, on the next airport agenda, we'll be considering, um, the, the resuming decision and discussion of a through the fence agreement with, with a process that was started way back when Joe Melling was here. The, uh, property owner was under the impression that they had that. And basically where we left off is the city council was going to consider it. And we did a, a property swap with, with that property owner with their expectation that we would do that. It was never applied for with, uh, with the FAA and we never came to any sort of agreement on paper. So, in, in doing our, our due diligence, we're going to, out of good faith, resume communications with them. Well, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but Airport Board's gonna review a proposal that they submitted and we'll look to see other through the fence agreements and see if it's consistent with those. They will make a recommendation, which will come to city council, just so you're aware of that. Also, bec- this is an Airport Board thing and a Planning Commission thing. Um, we need to adjust and dedicate a, um, a more thorough airport overlay zone, as required by Utah law. So, we have, I have like five or six from different cities and counties, local airports that they've done recently. And we'll kind of, um, cherry pick some of the best ways of going about doing it. Airport Board will look at it, make a recommendation, they'll go to Planning Commission, they'll look at it, make a recommendation, it'll come to city council. Um, the mayor and I got on a call with, um, that Five County, um, put together for us, Nate Wyberg, um, with EDA. Um, it looks like there should be a, a decent funding source and it looks like we have maybe the right, perfect, um, abil- um, situation that we may be able to apply for a grant in phases to build the airport road and put in infrastructure. Um, I don't know how much I wanna say in a public meeting, but we did put a proposal to a property owner to realign the road. And they met with their realtor today and I'm gonna call him tomorrow, we'll see what he has to say. Fingers crossed, that's been a long time in the works. If we can get that done and also, we may apply for an EDA grant. That's, um, that's economic development at the federal level, to see if we can get a, a airport loop road and utilities put in. Um, some real exciting stuff, the meeting we had with the E, with the EDA person sounded really favorable. We have kind of maybe the right mix to do that, so we'll continue to pursue that. In the, in the budget this year, we put in for a new phone system. I have, um, got a bid from our current provider, South Central, and, uh, we'll be reviewing that if that looks good, may, may bring that. Our phone system is at end of life, it's barely hanging on. Um, and so, um, hopefully in the next month, we'll be reviewing a bid and maybe move forward with that. Um, everybody may or may not know that we've been going through all kinds of email heck. Um, we, by Utah, has, has made a switch to .gov on our, on our email addresses and we'll be switching the domain for our website. Um, the council and all the employees have been painfully going through the process of switching to .gov. We're, we're right in the worst part of it, where everybody has two email addresses and we're trying to move over. Um, have patience with us, if an email comes in and, and nobody responds because we may be checking the wrong one, we will, we will also, um, transfer the website. We'll have the old domain point to the new one for quite some time. And then eventually we'll get rid of, we'll make the old one go off the air. We'll probably retain ownership of it though, so that nobody could do a fake Perrin webpage. We just by law have to go to a .gov. So, we're working on that. Um, the audit, the onsite part of the audit is done and it went fairly well. Um, we had new staff and we went through it, Callie, right, it was, it was fun. Um, even just today and yesterday, Jerry and I have been working on stuff. It's never fun, I just, I just am being facetious, but, um, uh, there wasn't any, any horrible thing that went on. We'll get an audit report from them along with our annual comprehensive financial statements that get, um, sent to the state auditor's office and be, and will be made available to the public. So, hopefully, we, that report from our auditors is good and clean. Uh, you may have noticed that Public Works is doing work up in the breakwater, um, we rented some equipment. We've been, we've been digging and processing, um, that's tied to the water project. Um, in order to put these big pipelines in down through our really, really, really rocky soil, we're gonna need a lot of bedding material. And the time that Public Works had to work on it is now. So, we actually rented a track hoe, we rented a screen and a haul truck so that we could do the work while our Public Works was able to do it now. And we're, we're stockpiling all the material. When we go out to bid on that project in January, we'll just, the city will get reimbursed for our, our costs on equipment rather than bidding that out to a subcontractor. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game, but that's when we had the time to do it. And of course, by us doing it ourselves will cost a lot less than going to a contractor. But we're starting to work on that, that's an item also we, we wanna bring back for an ordinance update to, to kind of tweak the language, our, our ordinance refers to it as the gravel trap. We'll amend that, that talks about the maintenance of the breakwater gravel pit as, um, flood control and so forth. So, we'll bring some, some stuff to the council to consider on that. Um, I already talked about administrative code, we'll bring some ideas. Um, when, when our attorney was brand new, he talked about maybe some recommendations to amend our code as it relates to voting, what happens when there's a tie, what happens when there's only three members present and, and we have a vote two to one, what does that mean? What about when people, um, um, don't vote for one reason or another? And so, we just need to kind of clean that up. There's a few administrative things that we need to bring, nepotism, we were gonna look at, a few things like that, we'll bring those in January. And the last thing I have is, um, we need to update our engineering standards and put them online, another Utah requirement. So, um, we actually got a bid from Jones and DeMille to look at that for us. And, um, it is not in this year's budget, so I'll put it on the next agenda to consider what their, um, cost was. Um, we can just adopt the AW, I forgot the acronym, AWPA, um, engineering standards. Um, but we have some Perrin specific standards that I know we're gonna wanna adopt. So, um, we do need to put those on the, on the internet so everybody can see those and they are not currently. Part of our subdivision code is, is that is supposed to be available, so we'll bring that and look at it. Um, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, thanks for making my updates easy. The only thing I have, and I feel like it's something people have been waiting to hear, so, it's exciting. Um, the DMV will officially be open starting Monday, December sixteenth, from ten thirty AM to five PM. The hours will be the same, Monday through Thursday and closed on Fridays. And you will see a familiar face there, working, um, Carrie Whitelaw, who was selected for that position, has been training for several months in Cedar. So, she'll be who you see when you walk in to get your tag renewed and get new tags and all those good things. Um, I also wanted to say how much I appreciate this council. Um, you bring great things to the agenda and it makes our agenda so much more productive to have you out bringing things to the agenda. And I think everyone on the council ha- has done that this year and that's actually huge because there is a lot of work to do and to have you bring these things to the agenda where we can work through them and, and progress as a city is, is a big part of this responsibility. And it's great to have us all working together so well as a team, so I appreciate you. Um, do we have anything from our staff? Callie? Legal counsel, Scott? No? All right, so that's all we have, thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. And with that? Oh, so the, uh, kids from the local All Iron County schools that came last year during the day, um, are gonna come again if, um, what, what time, to what time if the council wants to stop by, 'cause it's really a neat event? Okay.
This Monday?
So, is this just high school? You'd think I'd know about that since I'm like the sped teacher. That's why I was wondering if it was included elementary? Or is it just high school, I wonder? That's a hard question, we should find out, get back. I just know they called me to, to get it set up through the chamber. And thank you for being here tonight. Maybe they don't want me to. We appreciate you and you've taken some great pictures for us and we appreciate you being active in the community. Didn't you take pictures for us and do some news stories for us, some articles? Why do I think you took pictures at Old Rock Church and at the Christmas lighting? Okay, you're just here to learn, here to be involved. Oh, it's good to have you here, do you wanna tell us your name? Oh, okay, nice, thank you Ron for being here. All right, and with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I move to that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thanks Sharon.
That's my line.